What's the call to order? The Board of Finance, Special Budget Meeting, Public Hearing, March seventeenth. Fudge of allegiance, please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, reigning nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is public remarks. Please come up, state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Kristen Flannery, eight Flannery Row. Good evening and happy St. Patrick's Day from the Flannery in the room. My name is Kristen Flannery and I am a parent and teacher in town. I have been teaching at East Hampton High School for twenty years and both of my children will be at the high school with me next year. Poor kids. I'm here tonight to share my appreciation for the programming that East Hampton Schools have continued to give my children and my students. The high school in particular is continuing to do incredible work to help our students be prepared for an ever-changing world and society. The high school offers more collegiate level courses than ever before, including new courses in the music, business, and physical education departments through Advanced Placement, UConn, Central, and the Connecticut Community College System. These courses give students an elevated level of rigor and difficulty. And beyond the content and coursework, though, these classes give all students the challenge and opportunity to learn and grow in their work ethic, perseverance, and critical thinking. Absolutely necessary life skills to be successful in their future. These new opportunities, most high school students, through these opportunities, most high school students are now taking at least one collegiate level course before graduating. Students who are planning to continue in higher education are better prepared for that environment with these experiences at the high school. In addition, the savings that the Advanced Placement, UConn, ECE, and Dual Enrollment Classes give to the families, the taxpayers, can be astronomical. Each college-level class can translate into thousands of dollars in savings for families. In addition to college-level coursework, we now have partnerships with Electric Boat and Eversource, where students learn about various training and careers available to them. They come to the high school, meet with our students, and based on our course offerings, our students are then on the fast track to job placement and can jumpstart their career. We also have a partnership with Goodwin College's Manufacturing Program. We've had a number of students gain internship experience and receive job offers, as well as be halfway to a degree in manufacturing. In short, the district has worked incredibly hard to continually grow and offer amazing opportunities to all of its students. Any cuts to the Board of Ed budget put these type of opportunities at risk, and that would be a shame. It would put East Hampton students at a clear disadvantage when competing with their neighbors for college acceptances and jobs. The long-term benefits of East Hampton programming far outweigh any short-term costs. Please move the Board of Ed budget to the Town Council and then to referendum without any cuts. In the twenty years I've been living and teaching here, I am constantly astounded by what we are able to do and how we've grown and changed. Students today have more opportunities than ever to be more competitive and rigorous in their learning and have more avenues through which to do it. This is something we should be proud of and remain dedicated to continuing. I'm thrilled that my daughter will be taking three college-level courses as a junior next year, and I'm excited for my son to become a bellringer and have four great years of East Hampton High School ahead of him. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, happy St. Patrick's Day. My name is Joanna Mercaldi. I'm on one Aldens Crossing Road. First of all, I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to speak and giving others the opportunity to share their voice as well. I'm gonna kind of hit various topics, talking to you as a mom, as a school counselor here in town, as a coach, and also as a resident of our beautiful town. As a mom, I no longer have children in the school systems. My children all benefited from going through East Hampton Public Schools, having great experiences up at the high school, earning AP credits, college credits, even before going to college, they had a number of college credits, which was very grateful for me because I was able to save a little bit of money. But this wouldn't have happened if they didn't, if they weren't giving the opportunities that East Hampton gave them. Right now, like I said, I have no students, no children in my system, in the system. So why would I want this budget to pass? And that's because I believe it takes us as a village, as a town, to really work together and get these children through the school systems and to become wonderful citizens of our community or wherever they happen to reside. I, when I had children, I expected people who were either retired or didn't have children at this time to still support the budget, to have it pass. And I have that expectation for myself. If I expect other people to do it, I should expect myself to do it. So that's why I'm willing to pay whatever we need to do to keep our school systems floating above and being successful the way we have been and giving the challenges to our students. So I'm hoping that others will agree that it is taking all of us coming together to work as our village to help our children to be successful. As a school counselor, I am seeing the needs of our mental health issues increase. You, I can't even, I wish I had stats about the increase that we're seeing of students being identified with ADHD, anxiety, and depression, and especially at such these young ages. It's just increasing more and more in the numbers that we're getting kids coming in with these mental health concerns. COVID didn't help, and we are still seeing the effects of COVID as well. The kids are still having adjustments to what, how, and how COVID impacted them. We are seeing the evolving of the children with the mental health, as I just said, and we just need to continue to support them because again, it's taking the school and the teachers and all the staff there. We're not just doing your ABCs and one through, one, two, threes anymore. We are working, these teachers are working endlessly, as long as the staff, to help these children grow, not just academically, but also emotionally as well and socially. So it's more than what it was even just five years ago. We see a big difference then, from then as well. Sometimes these mental health challenges are inhibiting our kids from attending classes, coming to school. They're getting behind in academics and they're needing more of that academics. Okay, but I just want to say thank you for listening, thank you for giving us the time, and please support our budget.
Thank you for coming up too.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Culp and I am at one sixty Wapawak. I am a proud middle school parent and also the middle school PTO president. First, I definitely want to express my deep appreciation for the hard work that goes into making our district a place where our students can thrive. We've seen tremendous growth and progress, and it's clear that our schools are filled with dedicate, dedicated educators, as you've just seen, and a staff who truly cares about our children. As a friend of a slain Sandy Hook teacher and as a middle school parent, I want to especially thank the district for prioritizing student safety by investing in the security systems and armed guards that our schools have. On October first, it was a very scary day for all of us, but those measures made a world of difference and the budget to make that happen. It brings some peace of mind to know that our children are being protected in an environment that is both safe and fosters learning. Our PTO in the middle school takes pride in supporting our schools, but I want to acknowledge the tremendous contributions parents are making beyond just our tax dollars. We have been working hard to fill the gaps, stepping in to provide resources that go well beyond the traditional roles of a PTO. We recently contributed fourteen thousand dollars to improve school infrastructure. It's in our comments. We love the addition of our new family consumer science program. I mean, I called it Homeec and it's back, and we're very happy about that. And with that, you know, our kids will learn some valuable life skills. However, the class, when the class began, it lacked basic supplies. The PTO was happy to step in supplying microwaves and blenders so students could fully engage in hands-on learning. We have been contributing to a lot of other things in our schools. We have six new outdoor tables. We've helped with field trips, enrichment programs, and helped teachers access supplies to support their classrooms. Parents in our community are stepping up in incredible ways, and we have a long list of additional items we'd love to help with. However, it is our hope to focus more on funding enrichment opportunities rather than essential needs. My family loves our schools, our staff, the supportive community that we have built here. We've been excited to see all the growth that's already happened. We moved here when my daughter was in second grade, right before COVID, and it has been wonderful. And we have grown tremendously and would like to continue, like to continue to see that growth and work together to get there. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Finn. For those who don't know me, I live at eighty-five Champion Hill Road here in East Hampton. I have five children in the East Hampton School System at the moment, and we have a two-year-old who will eventually be in the system. I wanted to take a moment to specifically talk about the, the challenges around special education funding and how it impacts my family. My daughter had a brain injury at three years old. She has, she was a normal kid prior to that, but unfortunately now has significant developmental delays. The Memorial School Special Education Program has been absolutely life-changing for her in a positive way. And the amount of growth that she's had and the ability she now has from not being able to walk at the hospital or speak at all to now being able to put some words together and communicate a lot of different strategies. And the fact that she's able to have that one-on-one para and makes a huge difference in her life and huge difference for us. And I know special education funding is a challenge, and I want to encourage this board especially to be cautious about cutting other services, other teachers, other, other needs when it's really the state needs to step up with their funding. We have to do what we can here as a town, and I think covering the, keeping the programs that we already have that are so successful in town going is really important. Making sure there's enough allocated for special education funding so that we don't continually have cost overruns, I think is really important. And it's important that we do that, supervise wide open and not plan catch-up later in the year. I support the budget the way it's been proposed, and I hope, hope you guys do as well. I do think that work can be done on the, potential on the revenue side for the town as we think about opportunities to save money, whether it be through solar projects or through consolidation of services in some ways that might create some efficiencies. There's probably opportunities there that are more efficient and more effective than cutting back on the money we spend on people and in, in the school system. So that's my piece. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Anyone online?
Yes, hi, this is Brian Turner, forty-two Spice Hill Drive. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. So just, just some thoughts here. I'm kind of shooting from the hip, so please bear with me, but we're looking at a pretty significant increase in the budget. It's gonna lead to higher taxes for everybody. For many of us, the last four years have really, really been a struggle financially with inflation and the cost of living. And we've all had to tighten the belt, and we've all had to cut spending and just to make ends meet. And now the town is asking for even more money. It's like more and more money every year. And with the increased budget request, we're gonna pay more in taxes. Our monthly mortgage payments are gonna go up to cover those increases. And honestly, I'm really hard-pressed to recognize any additional benefits or services from the town as a result of the continued rise in property taxes. Yeah, I moved here with my wife and my two small children about twelve years ago. Because the town was nice and quiet and the taxes were lower, excuse me. Taxes were lower than where we previously should have lived in the state. It was a nice town and the taxes were reasonable, and since then, the taxes have continued to rise. It's gotten to the point now where we're actively looking to move out of town if things don't change soon. And we're not the only ones. I've talked to a number of people who feel the same way, and they're all making plans to relocate. We've seen taxes go up, but the same roads have potholes, and the school system is rated below about half the school systems in the state. And I'm really not sure where all the money is going. Now, I realize the bulk of the budget comes from the schools, and as a father, I realize how important education really is. But we've watched student enrollment drop year after year, and the budget requirements for the schools go up and up. Throwing money at education does not equate to a better education. I think the school system owes us details on school performance, the impact money has on it over the scope of the last decade. And I request the following information to be briefed to the town's taxpayers before any decisions are made on the budget. We need metrics on math, science, and English scores, SAT scores, standardized test scores, and other metrics by year over the last decade to better evaluate our education system. And we need the baseline regional and state averages by which to compare these things so we can get an honest, unfiltered understanding on what the return on our investment really is. We need to know what the taxpayer-funded training and conferences that school staff are attending and why and how that impacts our education. And we need to be shown how every expense directly results in a better education for our town students. And we need to see cuts to anything that doesn't. Every year, parents have a knee-jerk reaction supporting more funding for the schools, but I'd like to see in black and white how that money will benefit our town students. Anything that can't be directly correlated to that goal must be eliminated. I urge you not to increase the budget, but rather exercise fiscal responsibility as all families in East Hampton have had to do in this terrible economic situation we find ourselves in over the last four years. Unfortunately, we can't all have everything we want. If we can't afford it, the same goes for the town and our government and at the state and town level. So please have the school folks give us black and white metrics. We really need to look at return on investment, not just emotional outcries. That's all I have for you. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Frank, if you want to make a public remark, you can.
Okay, oh, good.
As a private citizen, be my guest. And you have green on, good for you.
Anyway, I'm Kirk Kaminsky, I'm on the Board of Finance, and I just want to make a few comments. One is about community, and I've read through the, the town manager's introduction there, and he talked about community several times. And I think what I like to do is just, from my perspective, is who is our community? Who are we doing this for? What is the town budget for? We have younger children, and I keep thinking of parking wrecks and playing there, and then we have the school system that we have all the way through. And then I look, all those other people, and there's many families in East Hampton here that do not have children. And then I look at the senior citizens. So we have a here, and all their needs, what do they need? Are we addressing all their needs together collectively? And also to find, I had a little bit longer, but also our business community and respecting and acknowledging that we have a business community, that we have to supply an infrastructure that attracts a business community. I know we're not like Rocky Hill with ninety-one, or say Glastonbury up there, or even Manchester. But we should be able to have a, have an infrastructure and where we invite business because they generally pay taxes and really don't use all that much. The only one better than that is open space. Open space doesn't pay any tax or doesn't do any services, they just pay taxes. So I just wanted to make a thought of when we go into these discussions that we're addressing the entire community. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? So moving on, time for budget presentations. Did you guys draw straws and who's gonna go first?
You want me to go? I'll have a feeling.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to share some information about our budget this evening and for the time that we know you will dedicate to difficult decisions in the coming weeks. Our goal is, and always has been, to put forth a budget that provides our teachers with the tools they need to help our children succeed. This year's budget once again looks to maintain the current level of programming and services we provide in the face of increasing costs, unfunded mandates, and declining revenue from our state and federal government. Over the past couple of years, you have heard us say, this is last year's budget at this year's prices. Our current proposed budget is no exception. We are sure this is not the first that you have seen of the Board of Education's fiscal year twenty-six budget and that the number we are proposing is not a surprise. We recognize that this number is not what any of us want it to be. It is a problem that is being felt statewide. Please know that the Board of Education and the Superintendent have made concerted efforts to engage with our legislators in an effort to reform the current model of funding for public education. In addition, we have examined and will continue to examine our budget to find any possible ways in which our proposal can be reduced. We are extraordinarily proud of our school system, of the growth and achievements of our students, and of the exemplary work of our dedicated staff. And we believe that the proposal that sits before you is what is needed to allow East Hampton to continue its tradition of excellence. I will now turn it over to Dr. Van Tassel to speak to some of the specifics, and we look forward to discussing further with you on Wednesday.
Good evening, Board of Finance members. Good evening, members of the Board of Education who are here, as well as Town Council, as well as community residents and those that are online. Hearing some of the questions that have come through actually hopefully will be answered in this presentation that I am going to provide for you this evening. We've spent a lot of time putting this together in hopes of elucidating really the, the reasons behind the number that you have seen, as well as providing you with some background information which provides further context to the requests that we're making. The Board of Education budget deliberations themselves are, are a process that really begins at the end of one fiscal year and carries forward into the next fiscal year. As I have shared with the Board's leadership of this community, as well as with our Board of Education, as well as with the members of the community that I have reached out to that have inquired about the budget. East Hampton has a tremendous amount to be proud of. It is an honor to be here as your Superintendent of Schools. I will share with you that in my ten years of being a Superintendent, I have yet to have a budget that has moved forward in the amount that this budget is. But my hope is, is that with the explanations provided, there can at least be an understanding surrounding this. I will always be the steward that this community needs to lead its schools, and I will do everything that I can to make sure that what we do within our schools and the requests that we make are in support of this entire community. I have never lost sight of that in any of the roles that I have been in, and I certainly will not lose sight of that in East Hampton. As some of the educators have spoken here this evening, and as I have had conversations with our Board of Education, as well as our administration, districts are years and decades in the making. Programs continue to evolve, students and their needs do change, and the cost of education is increasing. We recognize that. We also recognize that we have a role in trying to at least have East Hampton be recognized in the challenges that we are facing. And the Board of Education has made a strong and very concerted effort this year to engage with the legislative process, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the presentation this evening. So what I like to do is work through this. There are multiple levels of materials that you have been provided. All of those have been updated for you since was first delivered in our tri-board meeting that we had, our most recent one on the second quarter. You have received an updated budget book that highlights the changes that have happened within our budget. It looks very similar to the budget book that you were already in receipt of, but it has been updated. In addition to that, in full transparency, because we want everyone to recognize what is it that we are expending our dollars on, you have an updated roll-up code budget that's been provided to each of you. And then in addition to that, I've provided a copy of this presentation for you for the purposes of taking notes. I know that this Wednesday, the Board of Education will host or will be a part of the Board of Finance as you will host us for our first deliberation, of which we can get into further details and answer questions that you have as it relates to the budget. But I will just share with you that in the short time that I have been here, East Hampton is so much and has so much to offer as to what I remember when I was here twelve years ago. And from that point, it has continued to become a better school district. It has continued to provide programming and opportunities that the entire town and all boards should be proud of for the commitment that you have made to education. It is our hope that our legislature is going to begin to support small towns. It's going to look at the challenges that we are all faced with, and it will help us to address that. Within the past several weeks, there's been a lot of movement at the state level, and I foresee that that will continue through this legislative session. So without further ado, I do want to get into the presentation. So actually, this first part to the presentation highlights exactly what one of our, with one of our individuals, Mr. Turner, has asked during, during our, our, our public comment, and that is the returns on investment. Those were the exact terms that he had said. What are our returns on investment? So the initial slides that we have for you are just that. And these illustrate just some of the returns on investment. Mr. Turner also did ask about, show us the data. Let us see the data. I have multiple slides that I am going to walk through that illustrate only the highest points of performance, recognition, but what it is that the school is being commended for, not just within our families, but also at the state level. So first, first return on investment. This year, Memorial Elementary School was recognized by the State Department of Education as a school of distinction. There are over one thousand five hundred schools in the state of Connecticut. Memorial Elementary School was named one of, was named one of the hundred fifty schools out of the fifteen hundred schools that were recognized. And it was actually identified as a school of distinction based on the fact that our students exceeded high-performance levels as set forth in the Next Generation Accountability Standards that the State Department of Education has developed. That is not just the State Department of Education's Next Generation Accountability Standards factor. That model that they have developed in the state of Connecticut has That model that they have developed in the state of Connecticut has served as a national model. Other states have tried to mirror this. So with that model being what it is, and Memorial School being identified, I give tremendous celebration to the faculty and staff in the administration of that school that made that happen. If you look below at the data points, it highlights also trends of data. And this is where we've seen those gains. We knew that we saw tremendous regression post-COVID. We learn, students cannot learn at home, and we know that their parents want them in schools. In the past four years, you are seeing increases in grade-three performance that have actually placed it at the top of the state of Connecticut in our increases in literacy and mathematics. Return on investment number one. Next page, return on investment number two, three, and four. Our students in East Hampton Public Schools are showing above-average performance in what is called the District Reference Group. That is what DURC is. These are all communities with similar wealth indices as East Hampton. We have provided for you a listing of our comparables as to where East Hampton situates in English Language Arts, Mathematics, as well as Science. It lists all the districts that are in the DURC, and you are gonna know where we stand as it relates to those. We are in the middle and we are above. And with that, I'm going to just make a mental note for all of you. Later on in this presentation, we're gonna talk about where the town situates in per-pupil expenditure. But I want you to note that we are here in the middle and above as it relates to the District Reference Group and performance. Return on investment number five. Mrs. Flannery was just here, uh, to speak a little bit in terms of our students in the highest performing of classes. This is a tremendous accolade, uh, to share about East Hampton High School. East Hampton High School has been receiving gold, silver, and platinum recognitions from College Board. College Board, as you're all aware, is who is responsible for the Scholastic Aptitude Test, as well as other testing that takes place within school districts. This isn't just state of Connecticut. This is national. If we take a look at our students in our advanced placement performance at our high school, I'm gonna note a few rows, uh, within the data that I'm gonna give. The first, over the past four years, you are seeing increasing numbers of students who are participating in advanced placement classes. I'll double down on something that Mrs. Flannery did share, and that was, uh, talking about what those advanced placement classes mean for our families in the District of East Hampton. I, as a father of a student who was at UConn, recognize that in-state tuition for a semester, one-hour credit is a thousand dollars. Most courses are three credits. Each in-state tuition course at the University of Canadis- Connecticut is three thousand dollars. Our families who have students who are scoring threes, fours, and fives in these classes are actually receiving rebates, college education rebates, that are exceeding three, six, up to twelve thousand dollars off of college tuition. That is something I am sure that the taxpayers of the community and the families who are, are having students partake in these courses are seeing it as a tremendous investment, uh, but it's also an opportunity to enrich our students, especially those that are at the highest levels. The last row talks about those outcomes. You are seeing over the past four years, the increasing performance of students in our district at the high school who are taking these advanced placement classes. Those are some extremely challenging tests, and to see that almost eighty percent of the students who are taking them are actually exceeding levels of getting threes and fours and fives on these extremely challenging tests, and thereby, uh, having opportunities to have those applied towards their college coursework. Return on investment number six. Here is our SAT performance. Uh, you have a lot of, should have a lot of pride in this community in regards to how our students are performing. We've given you a listing of grade levels that have taken these SATs. You're gonna notice trends of increasing outcomes as these students are moving from the high, through the high school. In grades nine, ten, and eleven, at the beginning, they will take what's called, well, the PSAT, which is an indicator of how our students will perform as they move into the SAT. If you look in that first row for the class of two thousand twenty-five, those students that we are sadly about to say goodbye to in several months, note their increasing levels of performance as they are going through that high school. That is through the hard work and dedication of your high school educators, as well as all of the programs that have been put in place to support students in math, to support students in literacy, where they could have been challenged. The average SAT score for students in East Hampton is one thousand nineteen. The state average is nine hundred sixty-two. We have well exceeded the SAT average for the state of Connecticut, and it is something, and it is a point of pride for our, uh, East Hampton High School students. Uh, congratulations to all of them. So I wanted to begin with some returns on investment, and there are many more, but those are specific data points that, uh, I believe, uh, were probably some of the numbers that Mr. Turner was hopeful that we would share. Uh, and there are many more data points to share, but I've been told I have probably ten minutes left, fifteen minutes left in the presentation. So let's get right to the numbers of the proposal. So, uh, this does give the overall picture, and to all members of the Town Council, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, this is not something our, uh, Town Council, Board of Ed, uh, Board of Finance, this is not something you have not seen before. Uh, these are obviously, uh, higher numbers. I'm gonna illustrate them just a little bit, give some brief context to all of it. Uh, right now, as it situates, uh, the board's budget originally as proposed by me was a seven-point-three percent. The Board of Education, through its deliberations, did reduce that to a six-point-nine percent. Uh, with that, uh, making note of the fact, the two largest portions, which really account for eighty-four percent, eighty-three, eighty-four percent of your budget is in your personnel. Sixty-five percent of that is in wages, uh, eighteen percent of that is in benefits. There isn't a lot of money in these other programs or in those other areas of the budget. Uh, as, uh, Director of Finance, Yulka, would share, as well as our Business Manager will share, uh, these categories are all set up through our Uniform Chart of Accounts. This is how our auditors review our budget. This is how we submit our data and materials to the State, uh, Department of Education as they review district budgets. But these are all of our overarching categories that are found within your roll-up codes. The next slide is the slide that really tells it all. And this is, and I'm sorry that it is cut out at the very bottom of this. I'm not sure how best to enlarge it or if there's a way of enlarging it. Uh, what you will see on your written presentations is something that the public may not see right now, and this is a category of, uh, of, of how this chart works to share with you all. It has been very difficult for us to be able to convey, why is the budget what the budget is? Why is it six-point-nine percent? And so I want to be able to fully illustrate that so that you have an understanding of what are the major drivers that are creating this where it is an anomaly. But in the state right now, and I'll go through some statewide averages, we're gonna talk a little bit about where this compares to where we are in the state. Following this chart here, if you start at the very beginning on the first column where the numbers are, where it says fiscal year twenty-five, annual education budget, town appropriation. This was the town appropriation for our budget this current school year, the current fiscal year that we are in, fiscal year twenty-five. It was thirty-seven million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-nine. It was a five-point new, two-nine percent. Coming into this school year, the Board of Education, and as it has done each and every year, has been asked to budget for what you know, budget the students that we are aware of. Therefore, the Board of Education does not build a contingency fund to help support any type of an offset that might happen throughout a fiscal year. So in doing what it has done, unfortunately, we ended up with significant number of outplacements, where tuition and transportation costs, as we have shared with leadership, uh, have been very, very high. Those costs were four hundred eighty-three thousand dollars coming into this school year. We all are aware that our electrical rates have gone up. Uh, we have a new agreement, uh, with CCA. We, it's a shared service or a shared partnership that we do with the town. And our electricity charges that we have factored into that fiscal year twenty-five, or fiscal year twenty-six budget are gonna show those increases. That's not something that we have control of. For this current fiscal year, there was a one-year agreement given by our health insurance company that artificially dropped the health insurance line to lower it for the budget appropriation for this current fiscal year. That was to the tune of two hundred fifty thousand. So what was to be the amount was actually reduced by two hundred fifty thousand, and therefore, it was only one year, and it was gonna come back in. But there were other areas that we tried to do some cost avoidance as it relates to this number. We have lost some tuition. This district does partner with neighboring districts. We have always kept open the opportunity of having students from other communities come to East Hampton, of which we do receive tuition. And unfortunately, we have had a loss of tuition. We hope to be able to gain that back. But that loss of tuition was a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars that we had to factor into next year's budget. We had used that tuition to cover staff that were pre-existing in the district. So unfortunately, we did build that back into the budget because those staff aren't just for the students who were here from a neighboring district. Those are stu- staff who service many students. We also lost a grant. Uh, there was revenue that we have received through a primary mental health grant from the State, uh, Department of Education. Uh, it was, uh, funding that was provided to districts as we do recognize the social emotional needs of our students have changed. The state has recognized that. Uh, so therefore, we lost approximately eighty-one thousand dollars. And here comes the next one. We receive a mandate from the State Department of Education that we must implement a new reading program for next school year. That program is a hundred one thousand dollars. It is a one-time investment into that program. But when you add all of those up, that is one million, one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars that has been added into this budget that ordinarily wouldn't have situated there. That is forty-three percent of the proposed increase of two million, six hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. It accounts for two-point-eight percent of the overall six-point-nine percent budget. If you were to reduce out those factors, our Board of Education budget would be coming to the town at four-point-one percent. Moving just to the next page, just to talk some highlights of some things that the board has done to try to address this. The most important point to make on this slide here is there have been no increases to faculty and staff in this school district for the upcoming school year. We have reduced an elementary school teacher based on student enrollment changes at the elementary, and then those interventionists that were once paid for by tuition but had been in this district previously, those did have to move into the operating budget. And that psychologist, which is highly needed, did move into the operating budget, and that's where we lost that grant. But we did not add any additional FTEs into this district. The FTE count has actually been a reduction of one. Highlighting key pieces here, as I noted, eighty-three percent of the budget based on salaries and benefits. We do talk about enrollment changes and reductions in enrollment. And just as I have committed to the Board of Education, I have been very transparent with our leadership of the district, uh, that with declining enrollment, will in time come with reductions in staffing. But those need to be done very, very thoughtfully so that we do not take away the programs and services that have been developed in this district over decades, as well as making sure that we're continuing to provide the outstanding education that the East Hampton Public Schools has been recognized for. There are some program highlights. The reading program, another dual enrollment personal finance course that is a requirement from the State Department of Education to offer personal finance. There is nothing more important to that, uh, to have, uh, for our students as they prepare for life in the real world. And we've added an enrichment element to that class with the dual enrollment. Uh, we had some aging textbooks at the middle school. We had yet to really meet the state requirement for a health program at the elementary level and the middle school. And of course, we want to further enhance our opportunities for family and consumer science, as well as technology education, because we know that there are tremendous opportunities for our students outside of, uh, East Hampton High School, uh, once they graduate in those realms. The next portion just gives you, uh, actually all of those roll-up codes in summary. Uh, these, this is your overall, uh, budget proposal for the district, broken down by the Uniform Chart of Accounts. You'll see where, uh, there have been some increases, but also where there are some decreased lines. Uh, and we will talk further with the Board of Finance during deliberations this upcoming Wednesday as it relates to each of those, but, uh, the changes are even more detailed when you look at that roll-up, uh, uh, roll-up code report that was provided to you. The next is your five-year budget history. Certainly, uh, the increases have been noted and what the Board of Education has requested, but we know what the compounding factor is. Compounding factor has been a loss of revenues through those years, as well as some of the changing dynamics and needs, uh, within the community. State of Connecticut across, uh, districts saw much reduced budgets during the period of COVID. And that had a lot to do with the ARPA funds that were provided. Uh, some of those funds, uh, it was not, uh, that districts couldn't utilize them to supplement. Uh, some of those were supplant, not supplement, which is a requirement of, uh, the federal government. Uh, so those funds were being used in the moment, uh, to help some of those degrees of offset. But yet you have seen increases, and we recognize that, and we will continue to watch the ebb and flow of our budget over the course of a fiscal year in hopes of being able to identify those areas where those savings can be realized for this entire community and all of its taxpayers. What are those additional savings and liabilities that we have? Obviously, state revenue remains a major concern. Any further state mandates that would come, uh, the HVAC I've spoken at great length with, uh, in regards to with the Board of Education, that could be very costly for communities. That's why we're working very hard with the legislature to try to roll back, or at least give moratorium to things like HVAC, or giving some further consideration to the fact that if there will be reductions, educational cost sharing, excess costs, we need to really look at these mandates to make sure that, uh, our towns are able to sustain themselves uh, during this period of change, uh, for funding. Faculty and staff turnover. Uh, at this point in time, uh, we are still midway through the school year. We are not certain exactly how many retirees we will have at the conclusion of this school year. Uh, but with that, we could see, uh, some turnover savings as it relates to it. But please keep in mind that the Board of Education already factored a dollar amount as a turnover factor in the budget, which we will try to meet. When we talk about faculty and staff turnover, we speak in terms of really what happens at the beginning of a fiscal year. But I'll be honest and open with you as a superintendent. Those pieces of turnover are happening throughout a fiscal year, over the course of a school year, where staff may take, uh, long-term leaves of absence. Perhaps, uh, some of those leaves of absence are unpaid, uh, as well as the fact that if a ti- of a teacher or a faculty member were to leave during a district, uh, during the school year, we may hire somebody at a letter, at a lesser cost. So you will always see quite a bit of dynamic and movement within faculty and staff turnover, and I've shared this, uh, during our tri-board meeting, and will always be very open with you all as to how that's happening. Health insurance premium costs and enrollment changes. Uh, unfortunately, the timing of open enrollment in, uh, schools does not happen until budgets are really- budgets are really set and set to town uh for vote. However, uh, when an open enrollment happens in May, there is the chance that we could see faculty and staff members who no longer will opt for our health insurance. Uh, due to the fact that uh we are moving to a different health insurance plan. But we also could see increases to that. It's just something we really cannot predict. We go based on our current enrollment of staff members. That's what we base the budget on. But yet there could be fluctuations that happen with that. Magnet school tuition. Uh, we saw a windfall uh this past year based on a new law that was passed where over fifty percent uh of magnet school tuition was being covered by the state of Connecticut. They hu- that they had funds that were set aside for that. They really haven't spoken about whether that's going to carry forward into the next uh year, but it was something that they did do uh for this year. So we will certainly continue to keep an eye on magnet school tuition because uh, that would be something that Boards of Education would be responsible for, albeit a lesser cost. But this year, the State Department of Education uh really offered uh a reimbursement to towns that we were uh unfamiliar with and something that was very new. And then other areas where savings could happen, and that is through shared services. Our Director of Special Services is very connected with all of our areas, Directors of Special Services. Uh, all of them are reaching out to one another to talk about programs and opportunities that we might be able to share. Any type of a regional effort will bring its dividends in finances and we will work very hard to see what else we could do with some of our neighbors uh to help offset some of these outplacement costs. Just to give some statewide perspective, um in all of my years as a superintendent, but I'll for over twenty years in administration. The numbers that we're seeing this year are unlike anything that I have seen. Right now, as it situates across the state of Connecticut, not all have been reported yet. I would say about half, little more than half have reported their proposals. The statewide proposed budget for school districts across the state of Connecticut is 5.49%. Thinking back to what I had shared with you before, had we not had four years of a deficit that we're trying to reconcile for this community, our budget would situate well below that at 4.1%. The area proposed budgets, and I've listed the districts in the area that I thought it would be good to share with you all. That is at 6.05%. Those are both through Board of Education as well as Superintendent Proposed Budgets. We get updated on those. I'm on a uh listserv uh and uh that is updated weekly. But currently, as it situates in our area, the average budget proposal is 6.05%. And then our district reference group, districts of similar wealth indices as our community here, those are at 6.04%. Some of the highest numbers that I have seen throughout my career. But yet it gives you indication that we are not that far off. And in fact, if we factor in the deficit, we're actually below uh where these other districts are situated. There was an uh, there was an article that was posted um in the forum of the River East that I really wanted to make note of uh with everybody here this evening. And that has to do with per pupil expenditure. Uh, there was information that was shared uh and we can't control and I, and I invite anybody in this community who is questioning numbers uh to always feel very welcomed. I am a superintendent who welcomes phone calls and will be able to answer whether it's going to be in support of the budget or not. I would rather make sure that the data that gets to the community is the proper data uh so that we're able to at least have an understanding that everybody is going to go on or a shared understanding that we'll all go on. The per pupil expenditure reported in the River East this past week was not accurate. What I have done in your budget books, if you all recall, the budget book that was provided for you in January gave you fiscal year twenty-three. So that in your budget book still exists as fiscal year twenty-three. But since the presentation of my proposed budget, the state audit has been completed. Uh, I thank our finance director and our business manager uh for their great work in getting that audit done. But the state has certified that audit and has now released the fiscal year twenty-four um per pupil expenditure report for the state of Connecticut. Right now, our per pupil expenditure is $21,675. We are ranked eighty-third out of a hundred and sixty-nine school districts. You are exactly in the middle. The average, actually, you're slightly less than the average. The average per pupil expenditure across the state of Connecticut is 22,837. You are spending less than the average. So when we go back to those initial slides on student performance and outcomes and we correlate whether or not the investment we make in education is tied to student performance, if that argument is true, then that is exactly where we are. We are at the middle or slightly above the middle. And when it comes to funding of our school district, we are at the middle. We are eleven out of twenty-four school districts in our district reference group. But I also put where we were in our spending in area districts as well. And we are not near the top as it relates to that. So that graphic that you see is actually where East Hampton is situated in the state of Connecticut for per for per for per pupil expenditure. And I have said this in the past and I'll say it again. I really believe you as a Board of Finance, I believe that the Board of Education and the Town Council have done all that you have been able to do to balance, keep your program in place in your school district, but being mindful of of this community and its, and its, and its stakeholders and its taxpayers. The next, I'm not going to highlight too much of this. Uh, this is just getting into an understanding of us trying to correct the course for everybody this year and to try to get ahead of the deficit. I will always be very open to say that there could always be things that we are not aware of in this moment. But I do believe that since we know that there has been four years of a deficit, what we're trying to do is reconcile it for this community. Could there still be additional outplacements down the road? Those we can certainly explain to you, especially if we've budgeted for what we've been asked to do, which is what we knew. Those are understood and explained. Uh, but it is something where there is the potential that there could be. But right now, we have had a cascading effect of a deficit that has increased each year. And over the course of the four years, that's what we're trying to reconcile within this budget here. This gives explanation to uh the deficit. The next has to do with excess costs. We hear a lot about this. Uh, this is the funding that districts receive to offset high expense or high-dollar students in special education. Uh, we are so grateful uh to the legislature and the governor who last week came to a compromise to add an additional $40 million into the excess cost fund for the current fiscal year. Actuarially, it is still very short of what is needed to cover the entire amount of demand that will be filed across the state of Connecticut. But it was a great step in the right direction. And at this point, we'll take whatever revenue the state wants to provide us. As it stands currently, we could see upwards of an additional $156,000 in this current fiscal year, which would further bring down our deficit for this year. What we did budget for next year was seventy-five percent for excess cost reimbursement. Every district is left to make their best guess or their estimate as to what we believe we're going to receive. The lower we estimate, the higher the budget request becomes. So we try to set ourselves into a middle. If we do receive this additional 156,000, that would be that we would receive a reimbursement of 78%. And we budgeted for 76% in the current fiscal year. Next year, we did factor 75%. Because last year, we were below 70%. We were at 68%. So we're still struggling to understand exactly what we will receive. As you are all aware, this uh, the governor did not fund anything additional than $187 million that was set aside for excess costs in next year's budget. And in the following year, had increased it by $40 million. As the legislature just moved on a compromise, they've actually put an additional 40 mil- million in for this current fiscal year. My belief is that at the end of the day, at the end of this legislative session, there will likely be an additional amount of revenue so that in fiscal year twenty-six, it will not remain at 170 million, 187 million dollars. But these give you some variations of what we may receive for funding or if changes were to happen. These numbers are based on our current student population. And the last speaks to also uh an inquiry that was uh received earlier. And that is, is what is the district doing? What are we doing to try to help mitigate the expenses uh as it relates to our education budget? First, uh, as was stated, uh, the Board of Education made the decision based on enrollment at the recommendation of the administration to reduce an elementary teacher. The next piece that I'm going to share with you is really, really important. And that is uh that uh this district had been in a PPO, a health insurance plan uh for several years. And we negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement with our teachers. And our teachers settled an agreement out of sixty-seven agreements that have been ratified since the start of this school year. The average is thirteen and a half percent over the course of three years. Our teachers settled at an agreement that was a percentage point below. And in those conversations of negotiation spoke to the fact that they know how difficult budgets are in this community. And they gave in a way that had it gone to arbitration, there is no way an arbitrator would have ever not granted the full amount of the thirteen and a half percent. But what's even more important to note in that collective bargaining was that our teachers agreed to move to what nobody wanted to move to. And that is the high deductible health plan. It is the least desirable health insurance option. It places the onus of responsibility on the employee as opposed to uh the agency of insurance. And as a result of that, there were significant, significant savings. But it was a huge give on the part of our faculty. Following a conversation or the negotiations that transpired with our teachers, we have as a district spoken with all of our other collective bargaining groups. We will be the only group in this community that all collective bargaining groups under the Board of Education are all moving to the high deductible health plan. Every single one of our collective bargaining groups has accepted this and are moving to the high deductible health plan, which brings significant savings to this tune. If we remained in the PPO plan, our insurance broker ran new numbers for us last week to make sure we were giving you exactly what what it would have been. If we had stayed with the PPO plan for this year, it would have cost this district $5,812,857 for the overall cost of that plan. The move to the high deductible health plan is costing this district $5,470,624. That is over $350,000 in savings that was granted through that cost avoidance of not just the teachers, but all of our collective bargaining groups moving to the high deductible health plan. In district and outplacement costs. There are the next two slides that I'm not going to get too much into the detail of, but I just, this next bit of information on this slide that I'm working off of right now speaks to this. You have made the conscious choice after listening to the administration share that having in district programs saves this community money. Our Director of Special Services did calculations based on current rates of outplacements and costs of running programs internally through the staffing models that we provide. Each of those programs, our ABA program, which is for our autistic students, our STARS program, the Learning Center, the Transition Academy. The savings that are incurred by this district is $5.4 million. The primary reading program, our Director of Curriculum was able to access a right-to-read grant, which helped us offset that reading program that had we not received it would have been $185,000. But we received a $75,000 grant through a competitive grant process that our Director of Curriculum had put forth. So there have been significant numbers of savings that have been done. These are just to highlight a few of those savings uh for you all. The last part, I'm going to skip this slide. This next slide actually breaks it down by each of the programs and those are where those graphics are, is that our legislative involvement. Um, as Chair Kohler had mentioned uh in her opening, uh, I would like to just once again acknowledge the fact that the Board of Education is doing everything that we can to have our voice be heard here in East Hampton. Uh, Chair Kohler, uh, Board Member Engelhardt and myself attended uh the uh, was an event called A Day on the Hill last week where we went to the Capitol. We sat with legislators, we sat with the task force leaders. This is a wonderful photograph. And let me get to this there so I can point out this wonderful photograph, which I'm sure they don't want me to highlight for everybody. But there is a photograph here where the person who you are seeing in the center photo, uh, she heads, uh, she is the legislator, Miriam Khan, uh, who uh, who is actually the head of the Special Education Task Force for the Legislature. Uh, you see our board members actually standing with her, uh, following her presentation. Uh, but we did attend this legislative uh day on the hill. We have had the opportunity to actually sit down with a legislator uh while we were there. But in addition to that, we have been on a letter-writing campaign. Uh, we have been reaching out to our legislators as votes were happening. And we have been seeing that our, our legislators have voted in support of the things that we have requested them uh to support. We will continue to press on as it relates to our involvement with the legislature. Board leadership, Mr. Engelhardt, today sent out a correspondence to all of our area districts and their board chairs so that we could send a unified letter of correspondence to the entire state legislature as it relates to the impact that these decisions that the state are having across our area to provide voice to our area. And I just want to make one last note of something that's happening. This Wednesday, a very important discussion is taking place. Uh, there is a hearing, an Education Committee public hearing. It is on educational cost sharing. That is a revenue that I know almost $100,000 reduction has been factored in based on what the new phase-out model was. So when you're in 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 uh Town Manager Cox's overall budget presentation, he'll highlight that. This Wednesday, they're having discussions as to whether or not to either hold harmless for another fiscal year or even perhaps increase the amount of funding that the District of East Hampton, as well as other ti- towns, will receive by changing the foundation uh amount. Uh, we are excited at the prospect that that could happen. And that's only going to bring further relief to this community if they are able to address that. But a public budget hearing is going to be happening this Wednesday on it. And also for the first time in uh, in as long as I have been in district leadership, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, CCM, of which your town manager is a, is a very active member on, as well as CAEB and CAPS, who are all representing Boards of Education, superintendents, as well as CAS and the Connecticut Association of School, are really putting a voice together about prioritizing educational costs because that is where we are struggling in communities. So with that being said, we will continue to do the good work that we can do. I hope this answers a lot of the questions that you may have. I will now longer than I was supposed to have gone, but uh, I appreciate your time, everybody, and I look forward to deliberations this upcoming Wednesday. Thank you.
You have five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You know, I can do this pretty quick if I have to. So let me just switch over here and do a little. Thank you. For those of you that don't know me, my name is David Cox, I'm the Town Manager. And I'm, I'm going to spend a little bit of time tonight talking about two things. One is the general government or the general operations budget for the town, which includes everything except education. And I'll talk about the town budget overall so that the community gets a little bit of a sense of how it looks and how it shapes out with all the information you just heard from the superintendent and what I'll talk about here in a couple of minutes. So as you, as those of you who have taken the opportunity to read my transmittal, which is the first several pages of the town's draft budget, you know that this is an effort that takes, that takes rather the work of a lot of departments. It's not only the Board of Education and the Education Department, but all of the other departments of the community work hard to put this information together and look to the future of this community. Look to what we're going to be doing in the upcoming year. Look what we're going to be doing in the long term. It's about strategies for the future and it looks at things like ambulance and long-term community planning. And so there's support in here for the Plan of Conservation and Development. It looks at capital planning, which is presented to you as a five-year plan, but it looks beyond that, out perhaps a decade or more. Much like the superintendent talked about and, and the President of the Board of Education Nancy Kohler talked about, this is about a status quo. There were requests for additions. Those have been deleted strategically. So this is about a status quo budget and maintaining the programs and services that the town of East Hampton has as best we can. Balances that growth and balances the needs of the town as we look forward. We talked a lot about the public safety and ambulance in the past. We're going to talk a little bit about more of that tonight. I did make a reduction in human services. We'll talk a little bit more about that a little bit down the road. And I also chose not to advance forward for your consideration of a full-time position request at the Senior Center. Again, we'll, we'll discuss. Overall, general operations for the town. So this is just the operations, the day-to-day activity of the town. It's not capital, it's not bonds and debt servicing. It's just the operations of the town. They increased by $501,000 and change, almost 502, about 3.66%. A lot of this, nearly all of this for this fiscal year is driven by the people costs, is driven by the contractual obligations that we have, making sure that we have competitive wages and various other costs associated with employees. Another big jump, another big jump is related to sort of out-of-pocket costs going to others. So the ambulance association increase, increases in costs for refuse disposal and electricity and things of that sort, some of the same themes you heard from the superintendent. Fortunately, we're seeing relatively flat bond costs right now. We're at the very beginning. I think some of you'll remember from seeing those in the past, we're at the beginning of that schedule starting to decline over the next few years. Right now, we're just seeing the small benefit of some reduction in interest costs. The other item that is probably the most significant thing that we'll be ending, that we'll talk about in the next several weeks is capital, is the Capital Improvements Plan. The plan that's been recommended to you by the Capital Improvements Committee, which again, I'll remind you is a committee that is consists of two members of the Board of Education, I apologize, both the Board of Finance, two members of the Town Council and a member of the Board of Education, sitting together to review all of the town's capital improvement needs and considering a plan to recommend forward to you. That's a slightly lower plan this year than a lower cost plan in the upcoming fiscal year than it was in the previous fiscal year, a little over 200,000. It's a, however, it's not insignificant numbers. It's $2.15 million of various costs related to roads and other pieces of infrastructure and equipment and technology at the schools and security pieces at the schools as well. So a lot of information is in there and we'll of course, talk about that in detail over the, like I said, the next few weeks. Impacted however, pretty significantly by the fact that we've expended a lot of money from the federal government in the form of ARPA, $3.8 million round numbers in the last few fiscal years. We have been able to use residual balances and a variety of other techniques over the years to try and keep that increase as low as we possibly can. Went up to a pretty big number last year, a little about 1.2 million. It's proposed to, excuse me, to propose to take another pretty significant increase of $570,000 this year, again, to pay for capital costs of the community. Those two things, that 500,000 that I mentioned in general operations and that 570,000 really constitute the overall increase to the town's budget. Let's talk a little bit about those details, those changes in more detail. As I mentioned, the increases, you see a lot of costs related to employees. $285,000 of that is salary costs related to employees. That's contractual changes. Those are anticipated increases related to moving through the steps. A general wage adjustment included in there along with an effort to maintain competitive wages. That's that bottom, that bottom tier there. We made some modifications in the Police Department. We made some modifications in some of the offices down here on the first floor to make sure that we were paying people well, so we didn't lose them. And that we could attract new employees to come to work for East Hampton to fill our vacancies. As I alluded to earlier, I am proposing a change in human services. That's that first bullet point under this section. I'm proposing to sort of bring our Human Services Department to its basic level. We have, a number of months ago, had a vacancy in the Director's Position and we stopped doing some things at that point. And the part-time staff in that office have been working additional hours and doing very capably, very capable work rather, moving that, that department's work ahead. So I'm going to propose a change there from eliminating the part-time position and just having the one full-time slot so that we can move that ahead. Additionally, the library is proposing to eliminate one of its part-time positions so that it will be a little bit more efficient. That allows us to decrease part-time wages just a little bit while making sure that we're paying those folks properly. You know that prevailing wage goes up every year by an index. It's a little bit over 4% this year. Plus, we again, have to compete with the private market as well as other municipalities. Pension and retirement costs, ongoing expenditures that the town has to deal with. The defined benefit program, this is your traditional pension. You put in money through the career that you work for us and then based on what you were earning at the end of your career, we'll take care of you for the rest of your life. Some of our employees have defined benefit program. Some of the long-term employees continue to have that. Police officers will continue to have that into the future as far as we know. Other employees, newer employees have been moved to a defined contribution plan. That's a plan simply that is based on one's earnings in a given year. There is a cost share, the employee puts in some, the town puts in some. And what you have at the end is based on how well it earned over its, over its life. That increases about 18,000 or about 15%. You've seen that number kind of high lately because as I mentioned, every new employee we bring on, with the exception of the Police Department, goes on to that plan. And so costs shift, if you will, from the defined benefit side to the defined contribution side. I double hit there, but the last thing I'll mention on, in terms of increases there is the support to the East Hampton Ambulance Association. This is a direct payment to the East Hampton Ambulance Association. It's increased by 56,000 to 108,000 from last year's figure. That's based on the recommendation of the ambulance task force who just earlier, just last week, finished its report and finalized that. And we'll be sharing that out with the Town Council and the Board of Finance shortly. As I mentioned, overall, that's those town operations of just under 502,000. There's that capital transfer I mentioned, detailed number, 569,948,000. Debt service costs, as I alluded to earlier, just a slight reduction, makes that total general government increase of 1,060,000 or 3.66%. Just the next couple of slides are just some reminders. Again, all of this is in the transmittal memo and in the summary materials at the beginning of the budget. But this shows you that we've, the current staffing level is maintaining at the 68 and a half full-time employees. Capital expenses, that's the, the second big increase that we're seeing. And that overall, as I mentioned, that's down a couple hundred thousand dollars from the past. Most of that is the infrastructure that we see every day. 51% of that or $1.1 million is roads and drainage projects and all of the activities that we see Public Works undertaking as soon as the weather breaks in the next couple of weeks. Then you can see how the rest of it breaks out. About a quarter of it is education-related expenses that lumps together their building-related expenses. That is the work that it takes to maintain the, the four schools that we have. As well then, their technology costs and a variety of other related expenses there. And the balance, about 26%, or rather 25% is broken up between cultural recreation, which will be the library and public work or Recreation Department, Senior Center, as well as general government and public safety, which you can see there. Revenues into the general fund, or rather into the capital fund, as I alluded to earlier, really diminished in the non-tax supported piece of the pie, that little slice to the upper right. We've been able to advance a program that doesn't use financing this year. And that's an important statement because the Capital Improvements Commission, Capital Improvements Committee rather, recommended to consider using lease financing in future years for the most expensive of our pieces of equipment to help smooth out the costs in that way and reduce the current financial burden. We do have some grants identified here. Primarily, that's the LoSiP grant, that's a grant from the state specifically targeted for public road infrastructure maintenance. We've got a little bit of funding there from other project balances. Basically, as you, the, those of you on the commission committee will remember, moving some monies around from the Fire Department and other locations that have, for projects that have finished and reassigning those dollars. And then lastly, I'll mention other funding. We're using quite a bit of monies from special programs funds. So that's the Recreation Department is putting some dollars in from its special programs. Basically, the costs that people pay for recreation programs. Any funds that are available there are getting used in some cases to pay for capital items. The Police Department, who has special revenue funds that are primarily related to private duty of our police officers, when they go and work, when you see them by the side of the road, some other entity is paying for that. And occasionally there are dollars left over there. And in particular, there are dollars there for paying for the vehicle that they use. And so some of the costs associated with the Police Department vehicles is coming over in that. But the big picture, the big note there is the $1.8 million of current taxes that are proposed to be transferred over to the Capital Reserve so that it can be used for capital projects and other expenditures. Little bit of history on the capital contribution. Those of you that are really attentive to detail will notice I've left one additional year on this, on this chart than what I did in the transmittal. I left the 2016 on here, even though it's 11 fiscal years ago, because I wanted to sort of remind everybody that we, at one point, we were putting a little bit more into our capital plan. And then we took advantage of some cash, we made some hard decisions and we reduced that down. To some degree, we pay a price for that. The Capital Commission or Capital Committee has heard me talk about that and the challenges that we face associated with maintaining everything that we have, 90 miles of roads and, and several buildings and everything that goes along with the municipality and all of the equipment that it takes to run it. So that's why you see here in this last year, we're going up again, back to where we were in 16 and now surpassing that a little bit. I alluded to this before, this is our bonds coming down. You see just that small increase to just under 4 million or just write it about $4 million in debt service costs. That's, that's principal payments, that's interest payments and that's lease payments. You see that number, as I said, we're on the cusp of that number starting to continue or starting to come down of these last couple of years have essentially been the peak. There's a refresher on how that's divided up. Most of that's in, in the high school. A big chunk of that, of course, is in the building we're standing in. And then it's spread out over several other, excuse me, other pieces of debt. This is the overall picture for the community as we move into the total budget request. That's that $60,346,000 and how that breaks apart. No surprises here, this is the way it's been for the last few years. A big chunk of that, of course, is education. A quarter of that or so is town operations with the balance in debt service and that transfer to capital. And other small, there's another small component to that, but it's primarily capital. Again, a different way to look at that, allocation of the total increase for the upcoming fiscal year, $3,678,000. You can see how that breaks out, the million or so on the town government side and the general government side rather, and about 2.6, as the superintendent mentioned, on education. There's that breakout again, again, this is now the 10-year comparison effectively. 10 or 11 fiscal years ago, the ratios haven't changed all that much. It's really the impact of some of the additional debt that we've taken on reshuffling the deck slightly. Before I get to, to the end here and I show you kind of where we, where we land, I want to talk a little bit about revenues. The superintendent alluded to some of these, some of the revenues. And it's that first item there. We have a little bit of growth in our revenues, but not very much. Our non-tax revenue is most important, but not a lot. I noted that, well, let me, let me, let me take a step. As the superintendent alluded to, we're going to lose about 99,000 or almost $100,000 in support for general education, that education cost, education cost share under the formula that was implemented by the state some time ago. We've been fortunate in the, in the most recent couple of years to not have to reduce that, to not lose that money. They've kept us whole, so to speak. All that means is they've kept us at last year's number. Costs keep going up, but what the state gives us doesn't change. And in fact, they're, they're continuing to implement now the reduction for this municipality. By the way, just for a matter of reference, about 81, I think municipalities in the state will lose education cost share. We lose a combined about $26 million. And about the balance, 80, so 88 or so municipalities in the state will get more. In total, they'll receive about 70 some odd million dollars more next year. Two of the most disturbing numbers on there are the increase for Greenwich and the increase for Farmington, who nearly gets double. who nearly gets double what it got last year. I'm not bitter at all. We did get a significant increase from the state in the motor vehicle tax. Some of you'll recall that a few years ago, the state reduced the maximum mill rate for motor vehicles down to thirty-two dollars and change. As a result of that, the state decided to pay municipalities on a formula that they implement for the quote "loss" that we experienced in that regard. It's a year behind, so we're getting paid in fiscal twenty-six for the experience we had in fiscal twenty-five. We'll get about three hundred twelve thousand dollars more in that particular revenue stream. However, as you'll note in my note there, it will reduce again in twenty-seven. There's also a shift going on for these taxes, which we'll talk about in a moment. As I mentioned, all of these grants are generally flat and or decreasing over time, and I noted that in the in the ten years since fiscal twenty sixteen, the town of East Hampton has received two point eight percent more from the state. In that same timeframe, I think cost of living would have been about thirty-four percent. Some other revenues have gone up slightly as well. But this is the direct influence of that reduction in grant costs over time. You see twenty percent in the early twenty sixteen year was coming from grants and seventy-seven percent or so, seventy-eight percent or so, was coming from our local pocketbooks. As that number from the state has gone down and costs have gone up, that shift is now moved up to over eighty-four percent coming from property taxes. That's townwide, all parts of the government, education, non-education. Another interesting challenge that we're going to face in the upcoming year is the grand list. Many of you know that we're under a revaluation process right now. That doesn't impact this budget. The budget that we're talking about right now is based on the grand list from October one of two thousand twenty-four. And due to some legislative changes, we're going to see a drop in our grand list for the first time in many, many, many years. While we continue to grow from a real estate and personal property tax perspective, people are still building houses in East Hampton, businesses are still investing in their equipment. And we saw a small increase in that figure, about nine million dollars. Motor vehicles have changed in the way they're being valued as according to requirements of the state. And as a result, we will lose twenty-three million dollars of value in motor vehicles. There's that shift I was talking about. Anytime there is a reduction in the taxes paid on a certain segment of the population, or in this case, a certain segment of the grand list, it likely has to shift somewhere else. There are small changes that I haven't described in here related to providing abatements for, tax abatements for veterans in our country, in our state, rather, and the legislature has given those veterans who are one hundred percent disabled because of their service, perhaps rightfully so, a one hundred percent abatement on their property taxes. Well-deserved, perhaps, but you and I will pick up that tab for about two and a half million dollars of value. So what's the impact of all of this and how does it move through the budget? As I mentioned, we'll see that decrease in motor vehicle taxes. That's worth about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of revenue that would be paid by those of us that have vehicles that will move presumably to those of us that have real estate or personal property taxes. That's worth about sixty-nine cents on our mill rate. That increases our mill rate for those things by about sixty-nine cents. As I mentioned, real property values grew by about nine million dollars. That's worth about three hundred and fifty thousand. That's a reduction of our mill rate of about thirty-two cents because that's new stuff that didn't exist last year, a new house that didn't exist last year, a new taxpayer, new equipment that didn't exist last year, a new taxpayer. That creates a reduction of about thirty-two cents. Here's those changes related to state support. The the reduction in general education support ECS money of about ninety-nine thousand, that's worth about nine cents. And the motor vehicle grant reduction that we saw, that's the three hundred and twelve thousand that the state is giving us because of lost revenue, helps us by about twenty-eight cents. I know that's a lot of ups and downs, but I wanted you to kind of get a sense of how some of those things impact. But this is how we draw down to where we think we land on a mill rate, but perhaps most important, where we think we land in an unchanged budget for taxes that would come off of our real estate and personal property. So there's that sixty million dollars of overall expenses. We have a little over ten million dollars of non-tax revenues. Motor vehicles at their new rate with the capped mill rate of thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents are worth a little over four million dollars of taxes. That leaves behind a need of about forty-five, almost forty-six million dollars, forty-six point nine, forty-five point nine million dollars. Once we evaluate the grand list and we determine the value of a mill based on an assumed collection rate, we end up with a, each dollar of taxation brings in one million, one hundred and six thousand dollars. So it's all math after that, forty-five point nine divided by one point one is forty-one point five. So that would be the mill rate on this particular budget if it were unadulterated before it got adopted. There's just that in a little bit different format. Those are my comments generally for tonight. There's a reminder for those of you in the room of opportunities for review of the budget. The you know, the Board of Finance knows this process well. The next week, you'll be, you'll spend time with every one of the departments individually to talk about their budgets in greater detail. And then in the next couple of weeks, you'll spend to get some time together deliberating and determining what your final recommendation to the town council will be in early April. All goes well sometime around, sometime by June fourth, we'll have a town meeting and we'll be able to adopt a budget that serves the community well into the future and especially in the next fiscal year. Here's a reminder for those playing along at home of ways you can talk to us, so to speak, notwithstanding the fact that you're always welcome at public meetings, but you can send an email to budget@easthamptonct.gov and everybody who's involved in the budget will see that. You can go on the town's website and submit a video message or an audio message that can be played at a town meeting, or of course, you can either come or mail to the town hall here. And all of this information is on the town's website, so. That's my quick run-through. Not quite five minutes, but
Good job.
Any questions? I'll take them. Otherwise, I will leave you for your deliberation. Thank you.
Okay, next item is public remarks. Anyone else like to come up and do these two presentations?
Again, for the record, my name is Daniel Finn from eighty-five Champion Hill. I wanted to just comment on something that was in the superintendent's budget in particular, is that the the Board of Education's asked to budget based on what we know. And whether it's run a business, run a household knows that you got to budget a little over that number because something always comes up. When you run a business, you have to have a contingency fund. You have to plan ahead for things that might go wrong with your with your budget, with your cash flow. Same thing for a household budget. If you don't have money going to an emergency fund or a savings fund, you put yourself in trouble. As a financial advisor, I always encourage clients to set money aside for short-term needs that are unanticipated so they don't drastically impact their longer-term planning. This might not be the right year to have that conversation about how the education budget really needs a contingency fund to cover, so we don't have to necessarily have to have those kinds of increases, but it is something that this board should consider at some point in the future. That prudent budgeting requires some overflow, perhaps a number that could be passed along over years if it's not utilized, but something that could cover those increases so you don't have a deficit planning, rather, as as the superintendent said, where we're trying to make up for years where we underbudgeted for what the actual expenses were. That's my thought.
Thank you. Okay. Discussions? Anybody have questions for either Dave or Tim?
Oh, reference, one question, this would be for, geez, I can't remember. I'm looking at him. Is, you know, referencing having like a little fund, like overdoing it and having it available. If I'm not mistaken, I'll Jeff talk to it, but I mistake that we have to have a budget for each year and it has to be confined in that year. Now, is that true? Is, can we have like, so to speak, like, say, a ten percent little buffer for next year? Or a ten percent buffer here, and if we don't spend it, it goes into next year?
Well, we we have a contingent, a contingency account, so anything that's not spent at the end of our budget year, just drop the funds out and that effectively is our ready days line.
Okay, so we can do it. Very good. I just want to make sure.
So many, many years ago, East Hampton actually was one of the first that was out of the gate on this many years ago, well over a decade ago, moved here, so I know this is going to address other ones, that there was a two percent carryover fund that was set aside for special education. A lot of districts moved in that direction. And this district was one that had it. With the state statute now, that portion of education, who have funds remaining at the end of a fiscal year. In the past, it was always that they could request to the Board of Finance that those funds be placed in a separate carryover fund and the town has enabled that. Unfortunately, when we've been running deficit, there isn't enough funds to put into there. Last year, the legislature changed that where it was no longer needing to be at the direction of the Board of Finance and the Board of Education could establish two percent carryover fund. Not something I would recommend. You already have done that. You've worked together on these. Fortunately, at the end of last fiscal year, the town did, even though we ran a deficit, the town did place money in for the contingency or special education if there was we've gone into a special education crisis that you could draw upon it. So they tried to keep the mechanism, or this creature of public finance funded. But unfortunately, the Board of Ed has not been able to contribute to it as a result of that deficit.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
I do have a question regarding the education proposed budget here. You made comments as you were going through your presentation that that you're looking to, you know, close the gaps and try to get out of a deficit, but I think you also said that this budget is really planned against what we know. I just want to confirm, what's in here today assumes the special needs funding is effectively for the current students and no projected increases, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Tim, a question for you on the faculty and staff turnover. You hadn't mentioned the retirees. You're kind of factored in a value for their departure. What is that value?
Hundred seventy, correct?
Sixteen.
One sixty.
I couldn't hear that.
One sixty.
One sixty.
One hundred and sixty thousand.
Yep.
And my second question, under shared services, when I was on the Board of Education, we we talked about shared services four or five years ago, and I don't know where that went, if that's just talk, or has there anything been established for sharing services?
Yes, if I could have you, Mr. Adrich, if you return in the budget book here. We've sixty-nine. Local and regional partnerships. Shared services, there is always the opportunity to further expand, grow those opportunities and as it sits right now, ones that have resulted in savings to this community. You, right now, share this town and Board of Education, Chair Director of Facilities, who oversees all town facilities. Wonderful decision on the part of this town. Brings greater efficiencies, oversight, and reduces costs and spending. The Learning Center program that you host in this community is actually at the golf house. It's a shared program with East Adam. It's split fifty-fifty as far as the numbers of students. Both communities offset the cost of staffing for that program. If it weren't for that program, those students would be outplaced at a much more significant cost, and that's a shared service between two neighboring communities. Our transition program, which, as you all remember, may have heard this from Superintendent Smith, we, the state statute changed two years ago, where we were now responsible for maintain student programming up to the age of twenty-two for students with certain developmental disability that would enable them to provide life skills. We share actually a transition program. It's done through an agency, so it's a shared service program, but we also are required to now provide programming out up to the age of twenty-one or up to the age of twenty-two. So that has brought some efficiencies. Your town and Board of Ed, I couldn't have asked for a better, a better working partnership as it relates to all things that we could do together, CCM. So right now, we are sharing in the purchasing of fuels. We are sharing in purchasing of electricity. And those efforts will continue. We contract together as a whole, which brings savings to the town. We are a part of multiple purchasing collaboratives where, for example, Cafeteria Nutrition Service Program, we were able to purchase items in commodity at greater reduced cost because we're in a purchasing collaborative with groups of other school districts to do so, as well as our transportation product costs. As you know, our transportation costs are very significant. We have actually shared transportation with neighboring school districts as a means of reducing that cost plus that it would have been that we would have had to pay for the entire amount of transportation up because we could share a bus with some neighboring districts because we're headed to the same place. And I also know that our special education programming does that as well for students to downplacement. So those are some of the efforts that have begun. I believe that there is opportunity for us to move forward. I don't have ideas quickly off the top of my head. That was going to be the next question, but I certainly have spent a lot of time talking with your town manager in regards to that. The Board of Education is extremely supportive of those regional efforts and will continue to look in that direction moving forward.
I did have a question for both. I know notice on on insurance increases, you go and had a number of eleven percent is, are you shopping in the same stores? That's kind of a placeholder number for maybe the unknowns that might come our way.
With respect to the town, it's a placeholder as directed by the basically by the state. The State Controller's Office manages the state partnership plan and has suggested to us right now as a placeholder, a ten to twelve percent. We picked the middle. We'll know April or so, I think, what the final number is for the insurance that we acquire through the state.
Are you all set, Jim?
I am.
Alona? Jim, you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to that. If it were not for our move to the hydropole health plan, we would have been faced with a seventeen percent increase. So that eleven percent, we did circle back to our broker two weeks ago to try to see if there was the potential that we might be able to push Anthem to move down a little bit in the, also due to the fact that we had moved all of our collective bargaining groups to hydroelectric health plan, perhaps they would move with us a little bit. But they're really subjected, based on our claims to loss ratio, that's been playing out over the past several months, that there isn't a likelihood that it will go lower than eleven percent. However, hydroelectric health plans historically, year over year, bring greater amounts of reductions.
I'll sit, Jim.
I am.
Alona?
Tim, you mentioned that there might be some grant relief for security items. Do you know anything more about that?
Sure. So at the point in time, is it okay? Do you want, at this point in time, the there are bills legislatively that are on the floor that are being debated. There is one right now for emergency communications that there could be a matching grant for emergency communications. It is Senator Anmar has actually been the one who has requested that be moved forward. So that is one. Unrelated to security, the HVAC, as we have shared with you all, we, there are many proposals that are on the floor. That's one that we know would be exorbitant cost for school districts. There is language right now that is being proposed that they would enable those projects, not the audit, but the projects to seek state reimbursement. If that language were to be approved, that could also be significant for communities down the road.
On Wednesday, can you fill us in on maybe the timeframe? And, okay. I do have something else. Can we get a separation of the two budgets, the special ed budget and the general operating budget for the Board of Ed? And then, Dave, can we get a list of the special revenue fund? You know, then what they contain, any extra money that's hanging around out there? And then the other thing, I don't know who, I get this from maybe Steve Fontenella, but the cost of keeping the, the old school board building, the annual cost.
We can give you details on that, it's about $16,000 to $20,000 of carrying costs, right?
Okay.
We can get you anything.
Thank you. Rich?
I'll save my questions till Wednesday, they're pretty detailed.
Wednesday.
I'll sit.
I wanted to, oh, go ahead. Sorry, for the report that came out of the ambulance task force, you mentioned that that just wrapped up. Is it possible to get that in advance to support the deliberations here?
Yeah, certainly, that'll get shared out by the end of this week. It'll go to the town council and I'll just send it to everybody at the same time. So you'll have that, I can probably send that out in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
I'll sit. Kurt?
Fine, thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn, so moved. One second. All in favor?
Yes.